So yeah, um hello. Alright, um. So I have a, I'm kind of, I've double booked myself today, so I'm, I'm good to like, probably for like an hour, a little over an hour, but I don't know that this will take that, but just for that reason, I think let's, let's focus on the, for this meeting, on the request from the Conservation Commission for a conservation restriction at 385 Main Street, Kestrel Land Trust Inc. And the other item on our agenda, we can revisit in a future meeting. Is that's okay with everybody?
I agree. Um, Mr. Chair, can I ask the people who are at the table with you, just so I can take the minutes, their name and their role?
Of course.
I'm Ava Gerstle. I'm the Conservation Agent.
I got you, Ava.
And I'm Mark Bobbsley. I'm the Conservation Director at Kestrel Land Trust.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
And also, Mr. Chair, we have minutes from 4:29 if you want to approve those?
Yes, I'd make a motion, or I'd entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved?
Motion second. All in favor. Councilor Coniff?
Aye.
Okay, cool. Um, alright, so conservation restriction. Ava, would you like to catch us up on all this?
Yeah, certainly. So this conservation restriction has been a few years in the making. It was, it's so, so it's at 385 Main Street. You have the map in front of you. And it involves, originally, it's a partnership between the community builders and Kestrel Land Trust. This portion in front of you is just the Kestrel Land Trust, uh, conservation restriction section of it. And it is a forty-two point five nine five acre conservation restriction to be placed in perpetuity, in conservation, in open space conservation, in perpetuity. And the Conservation Commission is a co-hoster of the CR along with Mass Audubon. And Kestrel Land Trust currently holds the land in fee.
Okay.
And we can answer, yeah, any questions that you guys have. Mark can answer a lot of them. Do you want to lay any other groundwork?
Sure. I mean, I think the only things I'd mention is that the conservation restriction allows a lot of the standard things, passive recreation. It's to support wildlife habitat and also to support any agriculture that remains viable on the site. There's around eleven acres of agriculture currently on this forty-two acres, but then there's some additional acres of agriculture in parcel one, which might also remain in agriculture for a while. So, yes. I think that's pretty much it. Other than that, you know, Mass Audubon would be the primary holder of the conservation restriction. The city would be the secondary co-hoster. And there is, I believe, an MOU between the city and Mass Audubon, which is underway right now.
Okay.
And both the conservation restriction and the MOA, MOU have been reviewed. And the conservation restriction was signed by the Conservation Commission at the last Conservation Commission hearing on June 2nd. And then the MOA, I expect, they have already fully reviewed it and agree with its contents. So I expect them to sign it at their next meeting before the meeting after.
Okay.
And I guess the last thing is that the state has also reviewed the conservation restriction and has approved it for local signatures.
Great.
I was just gonna ask what the usual process is for the approvals?
So after it goes-
Which, 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 who starts first? Who comes second? What's third? What's the priority? I imagine at any point along the way, if somebody says, "No, no, I'm not happy. We didn't want to change that." That there's a procedure, but how does that all work?
Yeah, so once, so it's a lengthy process to make it through the state for review. That's kind of the bulk of the timeframe on the conservation restriction side. Once the co-hoster, once the holder of the CR and the, and the landowner and fee have, have already been, you know, figured out. Um, once it makes it through the state, in this case, the Conservation Commission as the, as one of the holders of the CR reviewed it first. And then it goes to you at council, who referred it to property. Here we are now. They'll go back to council, exactly. And it also needs the mayor's signature, so.
But aside from that, no one else on the state level?
Uh, yeah, speak to the-
Yeah, so what's approved for local signatures, it's the landowner, landowner, the co-hosters and the municipality, who is also a co-hoster in this case. Once all the local signatures are collected, then the copies of the signatures are sent back to the state and the Secretary of the EEA signs it, sends it back to us, then we record. Yeah, but they've already reviewed it. They just wait till they want to sign this. That's okay.
Explanation, sure. If this enables the city and parties to do something. Typically, that's what happens. There's a, there's a real estate transaction and somebody says, "Well, jeez, if we do this, then we could do that." You think somebody's, what's the, what are the interests involved here? What, what does this enable the community builders to do that they maybe couldn't do without this, anything?
No.
No, no, it was originally, my understanding, and you can speak to this too, is that they were originally part of one project as a, as a kind of a vision of having affordable housing next to conservation land. But the conservation land on its own, which is all that we're reviewing here today, is just about placing forty-two acres of really prime habitat and ecological, ecologically valuable land into permanent protection in perpetuity.
Right. Now, when you say originally, has something changed there with that project?
No, just they're, they're proceeding individually at this stage.
Yeah, with the plan of three each parcel. So, and we're responsible for the conservation land. We love the vision. We hope it goes forward to tie it into potential housing on Lot One, which is this area right here. And there's also affordable housing over here, the College Highway Apartments, which will hopefully be tied in as well. It's showing up as these empty housing for the elderly, the very bottom. Lot One is Robert Fiedler and Edward Fiedler right there. So that's where there is proposed affordable housing and then you have the RV housing down here. So again, that's the ultimate vision, that they be tied in, but it also stands alone as conservation land. It also has value just to conserve as is. So, you know, we're certainly moving forward with that portion of the transaction. Kestrel already, again, owns it in fee, and it's time to kind of close everything up in terms of, you know, crossing the T's, dotting the I's. We have a state grant, you know, which will be getting reimbursed for, you know, part of the purchase price. Conservation restriction is part of that as well. So, yeah, trying to just move all that forward. And then we will see what happens on Lot One.
Um, Councilor Coniff, any questions?
Um, no, my one question was going to be how this fits in with affordable housing, but you have just answered in that they are together but separate kind of thing. It's a vision, but you guys are gonna take this conservation restriction regardless of what happens with the housing piece, which, um, is that, did I hear that correctly?
That is correct. You know, we tried to kind of keep things on the same timeline, but at some point, it just didn't make sense to do that. We could move forward with ours, so we decided to.
And I believe the intention was always that there was gonna be two, there were gonna be two-
Yeah, no, we were gonna subdivide the two parcels, and that was always part of the plan anyway. So that aspect that hasn't changed. Where things might end up on our parcel, parking, things like that, how trail connections might work, that will all be related to what happens on the, you know, adjacent parcel. So nothing is gonna really happen fast here in terms of anything opening up to the public. We're gonna wait and see, you know, kind of how-
That's great. That's really great. I mean, from where I sit, this is kind of a no-brainer in terms of, um, you know, just protecting habitat and protecting wildlife and just all of the things that kind of make our community kind of special. And we've already shown in the last few weeks, I think, with the money that we got from, see, I can't even remember who it was now, but, um, where they, the, they, we removed invasive species and we cleaned up, um, you know, some of that, we, we offered money to clean up some of that, um, area. I'm blanking because I had surgery a couple of weeks ago and I can't think straight. So regardless. Um, it was a good thing about a month ago that we voted on. Um, but, um-
Oh, great. Fantastic.
Later, but basically, yes, removal.
Spectacular.
Yep.
So this kind of is aligned with that, and I'm, you know, I think local communities have to start doing these kinds of things because we're not gonna get any help from the government, either, you know, state or federal. So I applaud this and I'm all for it. And I think it's a fabulous thing that you guys have fought for and very much appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I have one question. Um, so as Chair, this is my first conservation restriction. What's the specific, do I need to make a specific motion? Is there like some legalese I need to read?
Well, the properties, Subcommittee's not gonna vote on it, right? You're gonna offer a recommendation to the council?
Yes.
But then you'll make the motion at council, is that what you're asking for?
Right, exactly. So if there's something, if there's a specific wording that I need to say, it'd probably be best to figure out what it is and make sure I agree with that.
Yeah. So that is the signature page for the full council.
Okay. So it would be, I would say, uh, that there's a motion to approve the foregoing conservation restriction from Kestrel Land Trust Inc. to Massachusetts Audubon Society and the City of East Hampton, acting by and through its Conservation Commission in the public interest pursuant to Section 32, Chapter 184 of the Massachusetts General Laws. So that's, that's what I did. So, um, unless there's any other, Councilor Quinzi, do you have any other questions?
I just wanted to review for our purposes, how public access will be handled.
Great, nice, great question. It will be up to the public. You know, that is part of the conservation restriction. It is required to have public access. We are going to go through a whole process of kind of evaluating the property and kind of, yeah, how it's gonna be handled in terms of, is there to be parking on site, if there is or if there is not, you know, how are people gonna be able to access it? I imagine there is going to be some sort of trail system, so we're gonna have to go through an evaluation of that. Part of it, while you see, kind of, the decisions are gonna be a little bit drawn out. Um, we need to see, I think, first off, whether there's gonna be active agriculture on the site going forward. I think at least we will continue haying or mowing the fields. Um, so if you have active agriculture, how do you wind trails through that and still allow the agriculture to happen? Are we gonna have people go back into the woods? It's possible. That's where more, a lot of the more sensitive habitat is. It's also the landscape, the topography changes a lot back there. It's a little tricky. So we're, yeah, we're gonna have to go through a whole process of like those.
Who's involved in decision-making?
So the, both the fee holder, Kestrel Land Trust, and then also the co-hosters of the CR are engaged in that process. So the conservation restriction, the Conservation Commission and Mass Audubon.
And the CR basically lays out a whole panel of what is acceptable on the site. You wouldn't expect that all of it would happen, that would overload it, but all these things are technically appropriate. Agricultural, passive recreation. I don't even know if it gets into hunting on there, but, you know, those are all things that could be considered and would be allowed by the conservation restriction. So then it's kind of getting into, you know, our own evaluation of what makes sense, given the design of the property and how things unfold.
Does it come back to the council or back to the community in some way? Is there public hearings on that?
Right. So, for example, like, let's take trails as an example. Under the trail section of the conservation restriction, it, it outlines new trails with prior written approval of the grantee, which in this case is the Conservation Commission as well as Mass Audubon. Uh, constructing new trails or relocating existing trails, provided that any construction or relocation results in trails that conform with the width limitation buffs, where they, where they lie out the width. The treadway up to, one meaning trail corridors up to ten feet, treadway up to six feet in width. Um, and so in those circumstances, the Conservation Commission, you know, meets publicly two to, this month we're meeting three times. One to three times a month, the Conservation Commission meets publicly and would be reviewing, uh, you know, conversations with Kestrel and with Mass Audubon regarding elements of the, of how to manage the land that are outlined in the CR.
I would imagine there's no community decisions being made.
No, the only one is evaluation.
Whatever Kestrel's gonna develop.
Or, or what, no, TCB might develop, we're certain of that, but yes. And I, and I think the only thing that I would add, you know, just, you know, if you're familiarizing yourself with conservation restrictions, some things are allowed by right to the grantor. We are the grantors in this case. But if something's gonna be more permanent or more potentially impactful, that's usually when it reaches a level of needing either notice and/or notice and approval by the holders of the conservation restriction. So yeah, that's how it kind of comes.
In short, if anything major is happening, it'll be run by the Conservation Commission, and that's where the public will have an opportunity to have input.
Exactly. And we have conversations about, you know, we, the Conservation Commission holds other CRs and also other parcels in fee. And we have those active conversations almost every meeting at the Conservation Commission.
In terms of, I was, I was just looking at the plan and saying, I was curious. And I see the budding landowners here, so I, I look to you also. I don't know if you can see the plan, but I, I hadn't thought I had seen, it's like the gas easement that showed up on the plan there?
That's right, yeah.
That's a gassy. I didn't know it also went across your property.
Yes. I didn't know that too, yeah.
Because it looked like the way it was laid out with the flagging that was on, I presumed it was the gas flagging.
Yellow flags, gas flag, yeah.
Through the middle of it, what kind of looked like middle of the field, every time I passed by there. And that through your, do you own the middle of that field?
Uh, not the middle of the field. I mean, it's just this kind of trapezoid here, but yes, it does cut to our property.
Yeah, so there's basically a hedgerow between the two properties, between us and the and then eventually you get to a place in the hedgerow where it opens up. It's kind of a forest, it's like right here.
And that skyline is right, right, goes right through there.
Yeah.
Alright, because it looked like it was all Fiedler property that was being sold.
Right, no, there's, part of it is.
Part of it is. Uh, since you're here, I, I just wanted to be sure that you had, if you had any questions about the public process and what we were doing. If you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I mean, I think you covered it. I mean, just that if there's anything that needs to go public, there won't be a hearing. And there's notices. I mean, I think that's important. And I think you already clarified and clarified.
Clarified that, okay. I just wanted to be sure that we answered any of your questions or addressed them.
That hedgerow, I know you were saying that you wanted everything to be aligned with the, you know, taking out the native, with the invasives.
Um, honestly, right there, that's not our biggest concern. We're more concerned about the invasives pushing back into the, it would probably be right around here. You don't see the open fields here. But preventing them from going further into the woods in the back. And especially if we do wind a trail back into the woods, that people are able to get through there. Where they are right now, between the two properties, they're just kind of there. They're not spreading and they provide a nice visual barrier.
Okay. Because I know there was some conversation before about pulling it, and I was getting concerned about fencing and, you know, like, if you take the hedgerow, it, there's no, it provides a natural kind of dividing line, so to speak.
Correct, yeah. No, we have no intention of taking those out. And if we ever did want to deal with the invasives there, again, I don't think we will, but we'd certainly reach out.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. And I understand, you know, the trails and things on the other side, that might be more pertinent, but this hedgerow's just been there.
Yeah, no. Yeah, we definitely, be thoughtful about that, communicate if anything happened there.
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you, Jean.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, would you, can I share my screen? Then I can show.
Of course.
I'm thinking I can show how this parcel will connect to other adjacent-
That's a great.
Parcels.
Fascinating.
Co-host, I believe you go down to the participants.
Share the co-host, yes.
Yep, and then I think if you click on those.
There's co-host. Beautiful. Good job.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I just ask a question before Eva launches into this? Could I ask for the name of the property owner that abuts this property so I can make sure that I get it in a minute? Oh, you guys went dark.
Yeah, we didn't think we, oh yeah, there we go. I did.
What was your name?
Oh, Jean Paul Wilson. I'm, I'm located at 377 Main Street. But I do have a P O box. Maybe I'll just put it in there later on the sheet.
And was that, was that Wilson, Jean? Jean Wilson?
Right.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Um, okay, so we're looking at Mass Mapper here. And this street right here is Main Street Route 10 that goes towards Southampton. And we're on the right side, if folks are familiar. Um, and these property lines are not representative of current, these are the outdated, this is the outdated, um-
Lot configuration, if you want to call them parcel configuration.
Yeah, precisely.
May I ask what changed?
Sure.
I think probably your best way to get there is just gonna be to hold that up.
Yeah, that is, yeah.
So.
So the little sliver, the thing that kind of looks like a cul-de-sac until you get to the bubble at the end, is the same?
It's the same, yes. And then basically that back, uh, lot line right there, it has extended southwest-ish, you know, down across and cutting off that around eleven acre parcel and on the front, that big field in the front. That is not ours.
Everything back, in the way back was left.
Yes, including those three loaves of open meadow. And again, that one entrance kind of corridor. It looks pretty good.
So something like that.
Something like that.
We did this at Concom, too. So, so that's-
We don't own that very front part, right?
So this, so the thing that says currently says the 385, is that clear? This, this front chunk right here is not ours.
That's the part that the community builders are-
May, may bar, yes.
Okay. And the rest of the back part?
Is all ours.
Is all ours, yeah. Which is all represented here.
Correct.
Yeah, that's the hatch section, the forty-two acres, including the little, the little neck sliver here.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yes. And that sliver, okay. It's always been separate, okay.
One's called Fiedler Drive, at least on paper.
Yes, yes, yes. And you purchased that in fee, you say, using your own funds?
Uh, various grant sources as well and our funds, yes.
Nine hundred thousand?
The mortgage price. Correct.
Um, you're not looking for any city fund?
No.
At this time, or what do you foresee in the future?
I mean, one of the nice things about the city having, uh, property interest through a CR is if the city wanted to invest in any public recreational infrastructure, they could through the CPA. Um, again, we don't have plans for that, you know, at all right now, but-
I know, I know, we cooperate on lots of things.
Yeah, so, so it's a possibility to establish a little bit further relationship on the property. So, yeah, it seems like a good opportunity to keep that door open.
Well, also giving Mass Audubon, you know, the primary monitoring requirements.
Yes.
That's always nice. It's always nice.
Yeah, so it's nice to see, I think, on the screen here, um, it's large enough for folks that you can see the two fields that are kind of one field, um, or three fields, depending on how you count them.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep, that are, um, maybe may continue to be in agricultural usage.
Do you know anything about the soils, soil types and how they, they can function, what types of-
They certainly map as-
Might, might be good?
Yeah, they certainly map as both prime farmland soil and, uh, farmland soil statewide importance. Um, I have not kind of dealt in, actually done an analysis with a farmer. We do want to actually have a farmer come out soon and kind of actually look at it and look at how it shows up in Web Soil Survey, uh, the state's, you know, soil program to see, okay, what does that really mean for agriculture? We know what could have, I do believe it has been in maybe one or two different crops in the past, but it's primarily been in hay recently. So, yeah, so we're gonna go, that's one of the evaluations we're gonna be undertaking. You know, what type of agriculture could it support? An orchard, maybe vegetable crops? Is it best to, you know, can you kind of keep it hayed and provide it, you know, hopefully, you know, forage for animals?
Is there a way of expressing preference for the land within this process?
You know, we will be talking with neighbors and in the community, sure, and, um-
So I'm thinking, I personally would feel strongly that if this is, if it is prime agricultural land, that the interest, usage of the land, uh, I don't know how you'd feel about that, Tom, but the more we lose of, of prime agricultural land here in the valley, the greater the to dim for me. This is our future, and I think-
I'd agree. I would agree. It is one of the absolute natural resource values that we're trying to conserve. Obviously, when you're talking about agriculture, it gets a little more complicated because you talk about, you know, what's viable, maybe there's a business aspect of it as well. There's certainly always a need for it. Um, so it's finding the right partners in the coming years, who wants to, uh, you know, is there an active farm in the area that would like to lease the fields? Um, is there another community venture that might want to start there, like a community garden or a community farm? Then it would make sense to do that. Um-
Speaking right up, right up my head.
No, and, and, and-
I think that, I think you-
I think we'd be all ears if there was a-
Oh, I mean, that would be great. Well, and then also, you know, we already have one existing affordable housing community and a possible another one. How could they be involved in agriculture? I mean, they're both populations, you know, in need of healthy food. Food access right there, as well as learning opportunities for agriculture. They're all possible. So it's a, you know, kind of a big hopeful vision, but we have to kind of take the, you know, the nitty-gritty steps to get there, which is kind of what we're doing right now, while leaving that door really open through the conservation restriction for all those activities potentially happen. Um, so we're laying a good table, I think. We'll kind of see what we can, what can happen then.
And it's, it's my understanding that you guys have strong preference on this, all like, this process getting closed out before the end of the fiscal year?
Yes.
Has to be, obviously, yeah.
And just for my own curiosity, why is that?
I believe it's because of the state.
The state closing things up.
And the state funding that Kestrel has received in order to, to proceed with this position.
I see. Alright.
I don't have any further questions.
Okay.
I think it's a great concept and I'd love to see you stand forward with that.
Thank you. I'll just throw one more thing at the script. You know, I was talking about the current conservation values. Um, another one that I think is important for everyone right now is actually floodwater storage back around the manhattan. Those floodplains back there. Um, you were in previous services, we can kind of have, uh, which was a real draw for us to this site, which had a lot of developability, pushed all the way back into the woods. Um, it would've been tricky, but it was certainly doable. So to keep water from flowing into there, to allow that big floodplain to still absorb big, you know, rain events back there. I think it serves East Hampton, you know, in multiple ways.
Just opposed to having the floodplain be added to.
Exactly.
I just gonna go somewhere.
Yeah, right. And I think it's, it's relevant to note that, you know, you can see this is a very, very rough approximation. This is just like the online, uh, DPs, you know, GAS layers of wetlands that are not accurate in the field. Um, but that there's a lot of pockets of wetland in the back there. We saw that in our field visit, and there are these like swales. But there are certainly upland sections that would, could have been developed should a person come along for it. Um, and we're just really pleased to-
Get them away from that river. And this corridor has already been identified as important. As Ava you were mentioning at the beginning, Kestrel Conservation Trust have a conservation area right alongside there. It's kind of Southampton as a conservation area right across the river. So a lot of groups have been working to preserve this corridor. Um, and then there are several APRs, Act of Natural Preservation Restriction, uh, restriction's not too far away as well.
Okay.
But anyway, that's it. Sorry to go on. I can start talking about projects.
I think this is, this all sounds good. So, um, unless there's anything else, I would entertain a motion to recommend to the full council that we approve the foregoing conservation restriction for Kestrel Land Trust Incorporated to the Massachusetts Audubon Society Incorporated and the City of East Hampton, acting by and through its Conservation Commission in the public interest pursuant to Section 32 of Chapter 184 of the Massachusetts General Laws.
So moved.
Second?
Motion second. All in favor. Councilor Coniff?
Aye.
Quinzi, now vote aye. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
So we'll be discussing this, I guess, at our, uh, our meeting, uh, in eight days. Yes, that is gonna be a doozy of a meeting. I, just because we got budget, we've got appropriations. It might be something that I honestly would recommend if you want to be there, that you- It might be something that I honestly would recommend if you want to be there, that you consider, uh, joining hybrid, because if not, you're gonna be sitting for potentially a while as we, uh, finish closing out, uh, the city's books for, uh, for the fiscal year. It's gonna be, we, we've got the budget and then we've got, I don't know, like twenty year-end appropriations, and so it's gonna be a while. It's gonna be a while, it could be nine by the time we-
I have done that before, but I, I appreciate the recommendation.
So if you could just be somewhere comfy, that might be in your best interest.
Um, and I will just let the councillors know that I will be unfortunately not able to attend that meeting.
Okay, I absolutely will be, I'll figure the schedule, so yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, I, I can prepare, I'll prepare a letter for the committee.
She'll be here, but then.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's great, yeah, if you could send a letter along, hopefully that'll have anything, if not.
You meant to fill in?
Yeah.
I, I don't anticipate it being super controversial, but.
I think Mark is, you know, even more familiar with this parcel than I am, so it's-
Thank you, yeah.
Super.
Thank you all for your support.
Great, see you in eight days. I would, uh, to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Motion second, all in favor, Councilor Coniff?
Aye.
So, is it good?
Aye.
Now vote aye, thanks, everybody.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.